Proclamation, which is always fun for me to do. And this is a proclamation honoring the Women of Glendale exhibit created by Glendale Heritage Preservation commemorating the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution and giving American women the right to vote. I'm going to read the whole proclamation. I would like to ask Dr. James Brewer, President of GHP, to come forward. Whereas in the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, giving American women the right to vote. And whereas Glendale Heritage Preservation has created a carefully curated exhibit to acknowledge the significance of this milestone by honoring 34 Glendale women who made timeless contributions to the village of Glendale and beyond between the years 1855 and 2000. And whereas, the Women of Glendale exhibit tells the stories of these women whose actions inspired innovation and change and made significant and lasting advancements for society. And whereas this exhibit, which is staged in the depot museum, is free and open to the public from March 1st, 2020 through January 2nd, 2021, and gives Glendale citizens of all ages the opportunity to learn about these remarkable women and their accomplishments. And whereas, the Women of Glendale exhibit is just the latest exhibit of the initiative and energy of the residents of our village in working tirelessly for the betterment of Glendale. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Donald A. Lofti, Mayor of the Village of Glendale, Hamlin County, State of Ohio. Section 1, that the Village of Glendale extends its heartfelt gratitude to Glendale Heritage Preservation for the creativity and hard work that went into the creation of the Women of Glendale exhibit. Section 2, let this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the March 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Village of Glendale in recognition of the unstinting efforts of Glendale Heritage Preservation in preserving the history and heritage of our village. Section 3, that a signed copy of this proclamation be delivered to representatives of Glendale Heritage Preservation as an expression of the village's appreciation for all that that organization has done for Glendale. And with that, I'm going to present this proclamation to Dr. Brewer with our heartfelt gratitude.
Thank you very much. Speaking on behalf of the trustees of Glendale Heritage Preservation, we greatly appreciate this honor, and this will certainly be on display as part of our exhibit. And by mentioning the exhibit, if you have not seen it, please come and see it. It is truly amazing to see what has been accomplished, and again, by volunteers. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Justice.
And something, I'm somewhat familiar with what went into this exhibit. And as I look at the people at this table and in those chairs, I can count more than a dozen who had a significant role in bringing the Women of Glendale to this exhibit, including one woman featured in the exhibit who happens to be at the table up here. So this project once more shows us how Glendale earned its nickname of Volunteersville. It's a magnificent exhibit.
Indeed it is.
Thank you.
And of course...
To volunteers.
Just a reminder, the grand opening was in fact Sunday, and it will be running until January 2nd, 2020 next year. So there'll be a lot of time to see it, and I've been down there now twice, and it's just a remarkable exhibit. And I think it's well worth everyone's time to come on down there and really appreciate the contributions that people of Glendale, Women of Glendale, have made to not just the history of our village, not just the history of our state, but in some instances the history of our country. So, thank you. Does anybody else wish to address council?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name's Chris Monzel, and I'm actually your neighbor. I live in Glendale, and I was served on Cincinnati City Council and also as a Hamlin County Commissioner, and I'm a candidate for House District 28 as a state representative. I just want to come by today to introduce myself and to look forward to working with you on important issues that are important to Glendale regarding public education with our Princeton School District, to the local government fund, which is something that's very important to municipal and village governments throughout our community, as well as public safety and making sure that our public safety employees have the tools and resources necessary in order to do their job to make our community safe, which we're very blessed and lucky to have here in Glendale. And you said Volunteersville. I actually do volunteer in Glendale. I coach baseball and basketball for our Glendale Youth Sports. I've done that now for nine years. So I've been in the village nine years, and it's been a great experience. We don't always win, but we have a very good time and really learn a lot, which we are really blessed to have such great children as well as neighbors in this community that get together and really help each other out in good times and bad. And so I've been very blessed to be here and look forward to working on the issues that are important to Glendale up at the state level and make sure that we have some common sense solutions that I think is missing a lot in our dialogue today. Special civility and making sure that we can at least have common ground on what we're trying to do in order to improve our community, and that's why I want to bring to Columbus. So again, thank you very much for having me tonight. If you want more information, you can visit my website at monzel.com. So thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Permit me one moment, please, just to congratulate Chris for launching his campaign here in council. We certainly could use an experienced legislature in Columbus and a friend of Glendale. Thank you.
Let me just ask, I can't see very... One of the problems with this council thing is I really can't see very much into that corner. Is our ICRC person back?
Yeah.
Just when you started the proclamation. Great, okay. All right. Does anybody else wish to address council?
You, Beth?
No. Okay, so hearing nobody else come forward, we will start with a matter of old business. And this is Ordinance 2020-09, an ordinance approving the mayor's appointment of Kathleen F. Ryan Esquire as solicitor for the Village of Glendale, establishing compensation and declaring an emergency. This ordinance is not now before the council because council passed it at the February 15th special meeting that I referred to when we were going through the minutes. However, I wanted to include it in this meeting just so that people who would only see this on ICRC or perhaps just read the minutes of our regular meetings would know that this very important ordinance has passed and how pleased we are to have Ms. Ryan as our solicitor.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. Okay, turning to new business, we have Ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance appointing David Herring and Greg Lee to the position of part-time police officer not to exceed 30 hours per week, establishing compensation and declaring an emergency. Chief, can you tell us a little bit about these people?
Sure. Guys want to stand up? First gentleman is Dave Herring. He has been with us about almost a year now as an auxiliary officer. He is formerly a Butler County deputy and left to enter business with his dad and came on with us as auxiliary, and now the opportunity has been granted through council in our budget this year to have another part-time officer, too. And he's one of them selected.
Correct.
And other officer here is a highly decorated captain from the Army. Am I right, Army? Did I say it wrong? Okay.
You better not say it.
He's a two-time Bronze Star Award recipient and served in Iraq. He also was a policeman in Madeira as well as Milford, and also left to start in the private business world, but came with us maybe a couple of years ago, I believe, as an auxiliary. And again, the opportunity presented itself to add another part-timer, total of two at this time for our department, and they'll be working night shifts mainly, and I'm proud to have both of them. They've done a great job volunteering, as we say, with our department, and I'm glad to have them. So if you guys want to come up.
Well, we've got a chance to say our thanks here, but I'm going to ask now for a motion for this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Madam Court, call the roll, please.
To dispense with the three reads.
Aye.
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 For the ordinance?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, now our last gentleman to come forward. Okay, I'm going to swear you in now to make it official. You've already, the council has done this job, so I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gregory Lee.
You hereby swear.
Do you hereby swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of part-time police officer for the Village of Glendale.
The duties of part-time police officer for the Village of Glendale. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome forward. Thank you very much. Welcome again. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's good to have you.
Is that your daughter?
That's my daughter.
Can we... Tell her, come on, we've got to capture her.
Michaela.
Come here.
Welcome, thank you. This is his beautiful daughter, Michaela.
Yeah, there you go. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Returning now to Ordinance 2020-11, an ordinance amending Chapter 72, the Village of Glendale Code of Ordinances, to make it unlawful for the driver of any vehicle to use or operate or cause to be used or operated within the Incorporated Village of Glendale any engine brake, compression brake, or mechanical exhaust device designed to aid in braking or deceleration of any vehicle that results in excessive loud unusual or explosive noise from such vehicle unless such use is necessary to avoid imminent danger. Okay. I guess, let's see, Mr. Cordis, could you give us some background on this one?
Well, yes, sir, I can. Marilyn Duke, Chairman of the Laws and Claims Committee.
Thank you, Wally.
Sorry about that.
It's quite all right.
No, I'm sure...
In fact, I can speak just before Wally to preface his remarks.
Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, and the public, it was brought to the Laws Committee attention by some Glendale residents that they are experiencing hardships from undue excessive noise primarily on Congress Avenue, and of course, there were some concerns with the noise level on Sharon Road as well. We focused on Congress Avenue because of that incline, that slight hill as you enter Glendale from Woodline, and the noise level from heavy trucks, and I'll just leave it as that, going up that hill. We did not get technical in our Laws Committee meeting with the Ohio Revised Code and its technical definitions for semi-trailers or heavy loads or trucks of that nature, but we did hear the residents' concerns. And with that in mind, we considered various options. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Wally.
Why, I think that's a good summary. With the help of the former solicitor, and you may wish to review this as well, we propose initiating, making it prohibitive to make annoying noises through exhaust braking systems, provided that we post a sign at the location that we wish to prohibit that noise. This ordinance would enable us to install the signs where we believe that there are problems or potential problems, and the one being Congress Avenue as you go down the hill towards the stopway. It's established as a three-reader, so it's subject to improvement or change if someone sees fit.
Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And we will not be dispensing with three reads here because it is in fact going to go through at least two reads, and we'll see, and even after two reads, then there will be a 30-day period before it goes into effect. So this is not, there's no emergency language in the ordinance. We felt though that the residents were indeed suffering inconvenience, the downhill there, trucks sometimes prefer not to use their brakes, they'd rather use their transmission or some other device to slow themselves down, and that creates a lot of noise. And so we're, we, at one time, if I'm not mistaken, we had a sign or somebody had a sign up there.
I can address that.
Chief?
Yes, we used to have two signs on State Route 4 southbound, and a resident brought it to my attention that lives right at the corner of Route 4 and West Fountain, that the signs were no longer there. I've been working with ODOT to get the signs replaced because they do have an ordinance in place for those signs through the state code, and we hopefully had those up as soon as they get around to it, I guess you could say. But that will only help with Congress now doing the same thing, so.
See, southbound Route 4 is in Springfield Township, Woodline, so we couldn't use this ordinance for that particular one, but he has that one covered.
Correct. So this was an opportunity at least to address one problem. There were a number of other problems brought to the attention of the Laws Committee, and those will be considered in future meetings of the committee. So since this is not a, there's no vote needed to be taken, this is simply the first read of the ordinance, we will... Is there further discussion or questions or anything? I should ask that. There isn't. So we will move on to Resolution 2020-12, a resolution authorizing council to approve the payment of goods and services exceeding $3,000 issued on purchase orders with then-and-now certificates and declaring an emergency. Council will notice that there's probably, there's a few more of these payments than we're used to in then-and-now situations, and I'm told that's because a number of them were part of kind of a year-end cleanup or clearing of the finances. So, do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Madam Court?
Yes, Mr... Well, no, no questions. I'll direct my questions to Wally in the Treasury later.
Okay.
Two dispense with the three reads?
Aye.
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 For the resolution?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us through our ordinances and resolutions. We now turn to our reports from the mayor's standing committees and special committees, and I will lead off by noting that for the first time in, I can't remember how long, we have no births or deaths reported to the village office. And moving on, I'm just going to say, okay, a number of you have probably seen in the Friday newsletter that came out, an alert, information about Alert Glendale. This replaces what we used to call the Code Red. It's a better system and a cheaper system for us, as a means of getting emergency information to our residents. Unfortunately, not all of our residents have signed up for this program, and I'm really speaking here to urge them to do so if they haven't already. It's a very useful way to find out what's going on, when things are, new things are happening. I think we just had one about the bridge closure on Sharon Road, and I would imagine a lot of people were glad to know about that so they could make alternative plans rather than driving right up to the barrier and realizing that they couldn't get past it. So again, and the good part about this one is it covers Hamlin County as well, so if there's an issue involving Hamlin County, we will hear about it on the Alert Glendale program. Chief, Hartwood, do you have anything more to say about it?
No, I think it's valuable. It's valuable information for first responders, both police and fire, that as much data as we can get, there have been some unfortunate incidents occur that had the fire and police personnel have been notified and may have located somebody a little bit quicker. It's just very valuable. We're not trying to be intrusive with the information, but you know, the color of your car becomes important when we're looking for somebody that's lost or disabled somewhere out, and we're looking. There have been incidents here in Hamlin County where that's happened, some not so successful. So we're just asking for everybody to update their system. You can tailor those to your own personal preferences, you know, what type of alerts you want to get. I don't think it's appropriate that we, that you get a flood warning perhaps, but I think that, you know, some of the other warnings that are available through the county is of value to all of everybody here in Glendale.
Well, and for example, of course, current events are suggesting that there is a considerable need for people to be made aware when emergencies are coming forward, such as communicable diseases and other things that might require action or knowledge on the part of our residents. So again, please, sign up for the Alert Glendale program. You can find out how in the Friday newsletter, and there'll be a, the brochure is in the newsletter, and it gives you a website to go to, and I believe you can also do it by the phone if you prefer, if that's a preference. Correct. Right. Okay. You know, sometimes we quarrel with some of the businesses and others that we have to deal with in this area, so when they come up with something good, it's always good to make note of it. And I can tell you that Duke Energy Company, we have, we had a meeting with them about two weeks ago, and they said, talked to us about a number of things that they were doing, but one of the things that they do is issue grants on certain things that go on in the, in a community like ours. And so we have already obtained a grant for the Harry Whiting Brown Summer Concert Series, and we are very hopeful about getting one for our village street fair. So, okay, thank you, Duke. You know, we're not going to take it all back, but you know, we appreciate you. On February 15th, we, council, as I said before, had a special meeting to form the Consumer Community Improvement Corporation. And this is an organization, I've tried to explain it a few times in the newsletter and other places and that. Basically, it's a means for the village to do a number of actions that as a village we can't do, but if we do it through a community improvement corporation, we can. We have designated the CIC as our economic agent, among other things, it means it can buy and sell real estate, which yes, the village can do that, but no, it cannot do it very easily or efficiently. So we are hopeful that the CIC will be up and running soon, and we did appoint directors for the Board of Directors, so it's moving forward. We need to get a, our nonprofit status, the 501(c)(3), and is there anything else we need, Kathy?
Not really at this time.
All right.
About that.
Good. And then the never-ending saga of the quiet zone, and I'm just going to tell you that, you know, I'm very pleased that we've had a substantial reduction in train horns since January 10th, when the quiet zone went into effect. For a week or so, it seemed like we were going, we were not going to get that reduction, and then it cut up, dropped off pretty quickly after that, and now it's becoming an unusual thing when a train does blow its horn. However, we are continuing to work to make it even more unusual and to try to get them to stop in all but the absolute, you know, times when they can blow the horns for emergencies or when they're passing another train. So we have, we are in contact with the railroads on this. When we hear a train, we try to get the time, the company, the engine, the engine number, and if somebody has a view of it, see if there's anything on or near the tracks that would warrant a warning horn, and then report them to the village office, because we then send in those reports to the railroads, and when we get enough of them, we're going to start sending them into other places. We are, you probably have also noticed the scenic orange snow fencing along the tracks on the west side, east side of the tracks, and I hope you're not despairing that that will never go away. In fact, it will. We have, just tonight, the planning commission approved plans for a nice-looking fence that will go along there. Our engineers have drawn up plans for it, and we are going to put it out, put the project out for bid so we can get a contractor working on it. Yesterday, just let you know, Susan Sumner from the Great Parks of Hamlin County gave a presentation at the Harry Whiting Brown Scout House and spoke to us about coyotes, which other than the quiet zone is a very big issue here in Glendale. And her, the information she gave us was that, first of all, coyotes virtually never attack human beings. She said it's happened maybe a couple of times in the entire state of Ohio. However, yeah, watch out for your small pets, and you know, mostly keep them on a leash. If it's late at night, I'm sorry, but you need to be out with them, you know. If you do see a coyote, a couple of thoughts she gave us, and I'm just going to pass them along here, is number one, don't run away. That makes you look like a meal. So you want to, you can back away, walk slowly, but don't run. And the other thing is you can, anything, any noise that you can make, anything, anything to do to make yourself look bigger and more fierce than you already look is going to help keep that coyote at bay, because you're basically always going to be bigger than he is or she. It's, they weigh about 35 pounds max, and so they're not interested in really going after you. And then she also recommended that you not leave pet food or even birds, and even birdseed out overnight, because coyotes actually do eat some of that stuff, and they're also attracted by animals, squirrels, and others that might come in. Glendale Youth Sports, and then I'm going to finish this, had a, is looking for officers and board members, and I, several of us from council went to a meeting on February 11th where we were very pleased to see a number of people attend and express a willingness to serve on this very important organization. I mean, this is, this is part of the fabric of the village, really, and I think some people have been doing the job for longer than they really should have been asked to do it, and it's really great to see some people stepping forward now and saying they're willing to serve. There is, the next meeting is going to be on March 10th. There is, the next meeting is going to be on March 10th at 6:30 here at Town Hall upstairs. For those of you who need it or are interested, there will be babysitting provided, so there will be no excuse for not coming. So, if you can make it, that'd be really great. And with that, that ends the mayor's report. Madam Clerk, we can call the committees.
Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee did not meet. There's nothing to report at this time for finance.
Thank you. Fire Committee.
Fire Committee met February 19th, a week ago, and we discussed the format of our monthly council reports and the different statistics that we would like to have included in them. And we talked about the Phase 2 final plans, and we were able to get another tour of the facilities to see those things that aren't completed. And then, under miscellaneous, we discussed the possibilities of having an EMS ambulance. This is just in the beginning phase to gather information on it. They gave a fourth pancake breakfast. And we also talked about the Safe Haven Baby Dropbox as a possible item that we would consider for our fire department, and we're, again, this is in the very beginning stages, and we're gathering information on how that could be implemented.
Again, just to promote a little more about the Pancake Breakfast on April 4th, and that will be before the next council meeting, so come on out and enjoy. It's our, our big event for the year. The fire station will be open for everybody to walk through as you enjoy our fine fare upstairs. All that money goes to our association, which is used for the benefit of the firefighters. We use that money to do things. We built a garage at one point and helped with that, with the donations that we received. It's really meant for, to serve our firefighters and things like, for our, their benefit here in the station. As far as responses, Jan, or, sorry, February was kind of a slow month for us. We had, we're down to 21 total emergency responses, and that's, that's as low as it's been for the last year and a half, so we're good with that. The more we can reduce, the better. The month we had 3,485 total volunteer hours in the station for our Phase 2 process. We walked through today, and I've included in the council package some pictures after today's walkthrough to let you see for yourself kind of where we are. Pretty good coverage of everything that's been completed. The Alert Glendale, we've already talked about, but again, just to reinforce it one more time, it's really valuable for us to help you. Getting that information, it's like, we talked about the vehicle colors, it's pets, you know, what do your pets, what kind of pets do you have, what's their names, something we can reach out to. It's just, it's all data that we need, and we need to have it as quickly as we can get it. If you have any questions about the system, the Alert Glendale, please call. Be glad to help anybody get registered. You can have it to as many cell phones, landlines, that you want. It's all built right into the system. We have started our computer upgrades. This kind of tags along with the alert system. So, the data that gets collected for the alert system will be able to be transmitted directly to our fire trucks. So, it gives us the information of, you know, possibly the medications that you take, and, you know, if you do have pets in the house, and what we are, what we're expecting when we get there. That's all part of the system. Unfortunately, the county kind of set that out as an unfunded mandate. We did not receive money from Hamilton County to purchase that equipment, so that came out of ours. We do have an emergency telephone in the front of the station that is functional. It's over by our main entrance. There's pictures in here also of that. That emergency telephone is really there. Should we be out on another run, should we be out on a training, whatever the case may be, hit the red button, it rings three times in the station, and at that point, it goes to the 911 center. So, you'll always get somebody from that, from that phone, and it's there. We have an additional sign coming to help identify that. And that's pretty much it for the month. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me add one more thing. Virus information, the packet, the single page I handed out, just kind of a general information where we stand. We are working hand-in-hand with Hamilton County Public Health. Should any more information come out, we'll get that out through the mass email or through Alert Glendale, should we need to. Generally, though, the biggest, the biggest thing you can do to prevent the spread of anything is wash your hands, okay? 20 seconds, 60% alcohol solution. That's really the biggest factor, so.
Very good. I might point out, too, that one other thing you can do to prevent transmission of diseases is don't touch your face.
No, thanks.
And in fact, one of our residents here, Dr. Will Sawyer, has a whole organization dedicated to spreading that message, which made it into the New York Times. So, now, unfortunately, they didn't say Dr. Will Sawyer, resident of Glendale, Ohio. They said Dr. Will Sawyer, who has a medical practice in Sharonville, Ohio. But, you know, at least the word is getting out, and Will Sawyer is, is one of the leaders in doing it.
Can I ask the chief one more question?
Yes.
We had talked about the emergency generator. Have you had a chance to look into any of that yet?
We talked with public works and kind of working, moving in that direction to get that.
So, the one that we've got down at the shop could be, could be portable?
Yes.
It would be put on a trailer, and then it could be transported.
Okay, good. We need it.
Thank you. Laws, Claims and Miscellaneous.
Yes, I've already reported part of the Laws, Claims and Miscellaneous Committee meeting of February the 5th. I'd like to report briefly on two additional items, updates primarily. We did hear from Dave Lumston on the redesign of the village website. That is underway. One bit of information came out, which I'd like to pass on to the public, and that is the possibility of providing links from the village website to the various nonprofit organizations in Glendale. And many of these nonprofits I'm aware of don't really have websites, so I would encourage them to start developing their own websites with a view towards linking that to the village website. Again, the emphasis is on nonprofit, community-based organizations. Lastly, I'd like to just simply mention the committee heard an update on the Community Improvement Corporation of Glendale, which the mayor has fully updated us on further, and it is no longer exclusively with the Laws Committee. So, without, with that, my report is over. I would like to schedule a meeting with the Laws Committee, and I will work with you online to set a date and time for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police Committee, please.
We did not meet, but I understand there are some things we need to discuss, so I'd like to schedule a meeting this month or next month. The month is getting full, so whenever Dave wants to.
Doesn't matter, I'm open.
Okay. So, we'll mess, we'll get that by email and get it all together. But I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you. My report has been submitted to everybody. We just had one big theft this month. It was a local school. There was over $7,000 in climbing worth of electronics and different types of furniture, through surveillance cameras and old-fashioned getting out and checking pawn shops. We have a suspect, he's been arrested, and he's locked up downtown. We also have a warrant out for his accomplice. So, it's all, whether we have the property back or not, we don't know, but some of it in the pawn shops we will. The next thing is, we are trending to do something really cool in April. It's going to be our first-ever class for kids called Bullying 2020. It's being put on by Officer Roger Haynes, who is a certified bully instructor. This came about through our SRO who's in our schools, and the things you've noticed in each school, that kids are kids, and bullying is still going on, so we thought we'd put on a class for the kids in Glendale that is unlike pretty much any class you've ever seen. It's interactive, kids participate, kids that have never been bullied will be bullied, kids who are bullies will learn what it's like to be bullied. It's intense, and it's straight up, right to them, they're going to like it. He's done over 2,000 kids in the Dayton School area, and that class is grown up there through the Salvation Army daily. So, I thought, before it gets too far north, we can bring it down to Glendale, and he can put it on. It's going to be on April the 25th, from 10 to 12. Depending on the number of kids that we get to sign up, we could possibly do a second class that day. I had the town hall reserved for the entire day. And all my, a lot of my officers will be there to be the bullies, and also to get bullied, and the kids will participate as well. So, it's not just sitting there watching, you know, film or reading from a piece of paper, it's actually from the get-go, right into it. So, I encourage everybody to watch out for the website, the village website, and the weekly bulletin that Mr. Cordis puts out for registration. It's free, so, just to mention that, too, as well. We hope if we change one kid's behavior, we're successful, so. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
This is so for children outside of Glendale.
Depending on the number of kids we have, we can't, our instructor, if it, we haven't really talked about it, but right now, we're just gearing towards the three schools and kids in Glendale. If the kids in the schools can participate, if we have enough room, we'll take them. It's just as hard to do 1,000 kids at one time. This is more like a 25, limited per session kids. If it's successful, we'll do it again. The other thing is, real quick, I'm sorry, forgot to mention, after this is over, he's going to start a series for women's self-defense. He is a world-renowned self-defense instructor, and it will be geared towards teenage girls and women, with human trafficking being such a big thing today, or, you know, in today's world, and Ohio being the number-one human trafficking state in the United States. It's very intense, all hands-on, getting thrown, getting hit, hitting back, type of self-defense for women. They'll love it. Every girl that's gone through it learns something, and that'll be following the kids' bullying program. So, looking forward to these programs.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation.
Public Buildings did not meet this month. Everything seems to be just fine and in order, so we didn't meet. Perhaps we will begin to gather later this month, or certainly unable to look at some of the progress that we're making on upgrading the kitchen in this building upstairs. And that is the extent of my report.
Nancy, may I add a little bit? The emergency exit steps have been installed behind this building, and Mr. Bessel and myself and Chief Hardwick toured the firehouse. We also looked at that. They're going to reconfigure them, so it works a little bit better, but basically, our problem of having an emergency exit has been solved.
That's great.
Finishing up with the firehouse present.
Thank you. Recreation and Playgrounds.
The Recreations and Playgrounds Committee did not meet in the past month. We're waiting for spring, so we can take some action. We plan on meeting again, meeting sometime late this month or early April.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvements and Lights.
The Streets Committee did not meet. We ran out of time this last month. I'll coordinate something through email, Wally, to get a Streets Committee meeting together.
And I will add, thanks to Tom Otter, our Public Works Director. We've installed a light out front, which you may notice when you leave. It's the first time it's been on, it was installed three days ago. So, it's part of a utility pool, and it's very directional, so it's a street light, but I think you'll find it helps the town hall and the firehouse.
It looked, it looked very good when I came in.
Just right.
Yes.
Thank you. Utilities.
Utilities Committee did not meet in the past months. We have scheduled a meeting for March the 12th at 5:30 PM. I'll have Mr. Cordis post it properly.
5:30, sir?
5:30.
At the village offices?
Correct.
For general discussion of utilities.
Correct.
Okay. How is it, sir? Did Rick Chan? Did Rick Chan? Thank you.
I believe that concludes the committee reports. We turn to reports from the clerk and treasurer. Madam Clerk, your report?
We're working on a quarterly summary of spending for the year, so we can track how we're progressing at a high level, similar to the graphs I showed at the first part of the year, so we can look at it, not in the minutia, but at the higher level. So, there'll be something, if not next month, since it's April the 6th, I think is our next meeting. I mean, I have the quarter fully wrapped up, it might be the next.
Right. It's going to be tough to pull together a report for the April meeting, but.
Unless we can type fast.
Okay. Just Treasure?
Well, much to my surprise, I was not able to access two of our accounts, so I was unable to provide an update this go-around. Two of our banks decided to update their websites, actually go into a new system, and we've lost access to those two websites, so I've been assured that I will have access this coming week, but the end-of-month statements were not available, so. But I can assure you that our investments have not gone down, even though the market has gone down, because we're definitely tied into long-term investments in CDs that are still generating quite a bit of interest for us, so. I will provide an update as soon as I get the information, so hopefully, maybe by the end of the week, I'll send something out to council.
Thank you. You've received a number of financial reports. I'll just list them here. There's 2020-03, the General Checking Certification for the Payment of Certain Bills, 2020-03 Enterprise Check, the Certification for the Payment of Certain Bills. There's a revenue report for the month of January, expenditure report for the month of January, cash transaction report for the month of January. There's also a report on Mayor's Course that's attached to the police report. So, do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of all these reports?
Subtle.
Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?